Good evening. The December 12th, 2018 meeting of the Long Branch City Council will now come to order. Roll call please.
Mr. Dangler.
Here.
Mr. Viera.
Here.
Dr. Vogt.
Here.
Dr. Selly.
Here.
Mrs. Wittes.
Here. Will everyone please stand for the flag salute?
Somebody changed my chair, there's wheels on it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law. Thank you. At this time is with great pleasure that we welcome Senator Vin Gupel here this evening and also Assemblyman Eric Hotelling. Would you please come forward?
Pleased to be with all of you today. Thank you Mayor and Council President Council for allowing us to take a few moments. We have two proclamations, but the first one is to an individual who really has done so much for this district. And he has been a shining star around the state and it's evident that he was one of three superintendents that were recently honored. So we honor Dr. Salvatore because of his ability to come up. We have on behalf of myself, Assemblyman Hotelling, Assemblyman Dowd, and the official proclamation from the President of the Senate and Speaker of the Assembly. Dr. Michael Salvatore serves as the Assistant Superintendent of Long Branch Public Schools and the depth of knowledge and breadth of experience has enhanced his successful functioning in claiming the district's ten schools. The Senate and General Assembly are pleased to honor and congratulate Dr. Michael Salvatore, who has been named 2019 Region Two Superintendent of the Association of School Administrators on behalf of the Senate and the General Assembly.[152.81][152.81](applause). I would just like to congratulate you for what you've done. You know, Long Branch is a wonderful town, a lot of tradition, and you have kept that tradition alive and continued good work that you do for the community and the students that you represent. Great? Thank you very much.[176.23][176.23](applause). May I join up for a quick photo?
Sure.
(laughing).
(inaudible).
(inaudible).
So I don't want to have my back to anybody when I speak to you all, but I just want to say this. It is really an honor. It's an honor to be recognized, but it is a privilege to serve. My job is to serve this community. And people know what I'm talking about. Our board knows what I'm talking about because that's what they do. The council, our mayor, senator, assembly, they serve. So it's a privilege to serve this community. And I have to say this though, this amazing community. And this community is at its best when it comes together. Whether it be sitting in the cold stands of a football game and watching your team win the state championship, right?[272.13][272.13](laughing). Yeah, when we come together for that, or when we come together when there is some tragedy. But that's when this community is at its best and it is the strongest community around. It's the strongest community in the county, in the state, and in the country when we come together. So what I say to you is this, I am proud to be here. Let's stand together, not just at football games, not just when tragedy, but let's stand together more frequently. And part by saying this is that every recognition that someone gets, there's a thousand people to credit for it. There's no one man, one woman, one team, right? No offense without a defense, right? We need each other. There's a thousand people behind this proclamation and other resolutions that I can credit and I certainly appreciate that and know that. And to the young men in the audience tonight, you know that too. That it was a collective effort and that's what winning is about and that's what recognition's about and it's about everybody. So I want to thank Senator, I want to thank our mayor and Assemblymen, and I want to thank all of you because it is a privilege, as I said, to work with all of you. Thank you.[341.03][341.03](applause).
Senator has another proclamation for the team and for Coach George.
And I know the city has a broad representation. Congratulations, wonderful. And we're going to give our state citations to you. If we can present Coach, if you can come up. And Freehold is actually in our district too, but I live in Long Branch, so it's a little easier.[365.41][365.41](laughter).
Go ahead, Coach.
Coach, on behalf of the state of New Jersey, we want to congratulate you, your players, your parents, everybody and all you guys did. You have been just amazing for what you've done to bring this great city together. Congratulations.[385.03][385.03](applause). Two years in a row, that is something that's not many towns in the state of New Jersey that can say that. So congratulations. What it does for this community is for every resident I know that are being this pride. So congratulations.
Thank you.[404.81][404.81](applause).
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you.
I'm not going to knock you down, Billy.
There we go. Good to see you. On behalf of the City Council, congratulations, Dr. Salvatore. Councilman Phil Dangler, and I've had the privilege of knowing you for many years and working with you on the Board of Education. And we too thank you for all your dedication. And none of this would be possible without the Long Branch Board of Education who donate their time. And I'd like you all to please stand up and thank you for coming out this evening.[441.62][441.62](applause). Thank you. And at this time, we have a video presentation.
(pause) Senior first, red light speed. Your senior is at the end of your journey, journey started four years ago. Work, drive, kick it, swing. And now, here we are, game thirteen. Never played thirteen games before. No one has in the state of New Jersey. We are the final game in New Jersey for the 2018 season. Long Branch Shawnee. We talked about what we need to do. It's about us. It's always been about us. What we need to do, what we need to take care of, how we need to finish each play. From blocks to runs, to catch it, to defensively, knocking it back, coming off blocks, eyeing the side, finishing the tackle. Now it's your turn, it's your time. We've overcome every obstacle we needed to get you. Every time you were challenged, we got one more challenge. One more shot, one more spot. We are not big. We will finish as one. We will dominate as one. Focus. Reach deep down inside with finally fortitude, let's find the strength, the toughness, the enthusiasm, to get it done. One more time, one more time, boys. Let's help it on, help it on.[578.12][578.12](crowd cheering).
(inaudible).
Reaching down inside with finally fortitude, let's find the strength, the toughness, the enthusiasm, to get it done. One more time, one more time, boys. Let's help it on, help it on.[598.12][598.12](crowd cheering).
(inaudible).
Good evening.
Good evening.
So first of all, I have to acknowledge one of your biggest fans here in the city of Long Branch, and that's Miss Debbie Talarico.[623.12][623.12](laughing). Who for years has been to every single game. I mean, this year, you've been to every single game, rain, whatever it is. Am I right, Debbie? Every one. And if anybody needs any information or stats when we come in in the morning, she's the person who has all the information. And I also have to mention all of our City Council because on the Monday morning after the game, the last game of course, Debbie, Mary, and others from the city all came up and said, you know, we have to recognize the football team. And by 11 o'clock that morning, I had either gotten a call or an email from every single member of this council, all saying the same thing. So, thank you all.[672.12][672.12](applause). But with that, so I wanted to welcome all the players, the cheerleaders, managers, coaches, families, and fans. Tonight is clearly a special night for all of you. We'll be honoring the Long Branch High School football team for winning the state championship, obviously earlier this month. It's a very proud moment for these players and their families, as well as the city as a whole. Back-to-back state championships is an achievement that few can say they've ever shared. The championship should be honored, but I'd like to make a few remarks about what I believe actually makes this a truly outstanding team. These past two championships were won after coming back when you were down on the scoreboard. That right there tells you the amount of determination, grit, and heart that this team has. To the coaches in the room tonight, you've done an exceptional job. You taught them how to be champion football players while also instilling in them how to have good sportsmanship. Long Branch is extremely lucky to have such leadership in head coach Dan George. Everyone getting recognized tonight has now become a part of Long Branch's history. Many generations will continue to remember and look back at this time. This moment will stay with each and every one of you forever. I'd like to now read one of the certificates that everyone will receive and then Council -- Council President Wittes, if you could take it from here. So I'm going to read the certificates and then Council President Wittes is going to call out the names. If everyone could just come up, we're going to take pictures by groups and she'll explain that. But let me just read what all the certificates say. So certificate of achievement, in recognition of outstanding performance in the 2018 Long Branch High School football season. Becoming back-to-back state champions and the first-ever NJ SIAA Central South New Jersey State Champions presented this 12th day of December 2018 by the mayor and City Council of Long Branch. Again, just thank you so much. I speak on behalf of everyone here in the city at large. We're just so proud of your accomplishment, everyone here tonight. Thank you.[820.81][820.81](applause).
Okay. Before we introduce the teams to you, I'd like to say that the record was 12-1. They are back-to-back Central Jersey Group Four State Champs, South Central Jersey Group Four Bowl Champs, number three in the Shore Conference, number 12 in the state of New Jersey, number two overall in Group Four, number seven public school in the state of New Jersey, and some say, as a friend of mine told me, the greatest team in Long Branch history.[851.54][851.54](applause). We would also like to congratulate the managers, the cheerleaders, and the marching band. You have a lot to be proud of and we congratulate you on your dedication and how well you have done in your competitions throughout the state. And thank you to Long Branch Board of Education, administration, staff, and parents for your support to the children and the school district in our city. Without you, none of this would be possible. As I call your name, please come forward. And I apologize if I mispronounce a name because I've been known to do that. Luke Arnold, Michael Bacon, Marcelo Barbosa Santiago, Isaiah Battle, Latrell Bennett, Devin Blount, Zadier Blueford, Kevin Sarudy, Matthew Clark, Cheke Coleman, Andrew Conklin, Jermaine Corbett, Santiago Cortez, Quazon Dennis, Mark Dennis, Marwin Dismuke, Armer Durant, Jayon Farrar, Jack Friedman, Matthew Ganthier, Jason Glasper, Jaquan Gordon, Matthew Godetti, Marvin Hall, Tyrone Hastings, Devin Hills, Berkeley Hutchinson, Leon Jennings, Bobby Lawrence, William Levy, Taquan Lewis, Gisara Lovett, Vincent Mandica, Joseph Maza, Jehovah McCullers, Hunter Metzler, Niles Montgomery, Jacqueez Moore, Laquan Morris, William Norman, Mario Olivera, Anton Bedila, Jakim Perez Basket, Gino Pathier, Simon Perrier, Tamir Reed, Ernest Reeve, Nicholas Riley, I'm sorry, Capir Ra Reynoso, Raul Rivera, Herbie Rivera, Luis Rodriguez, David Rodriguez Jr., Jarrell Sherwin, Jahair Smith Moore, Sean Starks, Tracy Taylor Jr., Lucas Telles de Saab, Victor Torres, Samir Tat, Emmanuel Ventura, and Queyron Wakefield.[1004.87][1004.87](applause).
Thank you, Beth.
Okay.
Big boys in the bag. Yeah, you can get on the side there. (laughing).
Great job, Billy.[1013.12][1013.12](applause).
Lee, can you remain up there? I want to call the coaches and the managers up to have some photos with you as well. The football managers, Jamie Hayes, Dasha Johnson, Taj Mitchell Epps, and Gisella Sanchez. Please come forward.[1041.12][1041.12](applause). And also the football coaches, Sean Brown, Jason M. Corley, Dan George, John Jacio, Terrence King, Chad King, Greg Penta, Eric Peters, Jamal Pitts, and Ben Woolley. Please come forward.[1068.12][1068.12](applause).
Great, great job. Great job.
Thank you.
Congratulations, wonderful, wonderful, wonderful.
Good job, guys.
Great job. Great job. Yep, you make us proud. Nice work.
Good job.
I don't have trainers or cheerleaders, yes?
Okay. Congratulations. Dr. Salvatore, please come forward. Right. Thank you.[1096.12][1096.12](laughing).
(inaudible).
Great job.[1099.12][1099.12](applause). Great job. Great job. Yep, you make us proud. Nice work.
Good job.
I don't have trainers or cheerleaders, yes?
Okay. Congratulations. Dr. Salvatore, please come forward. Right. Thank you.[1117.12][1117.12](laughing).
(inaudible).
Great job.[1120.12][1120.12](applause). Great job. Great job. Yep, you make us proud. Nice work.
Good job.
I don't have trainers or cheerleaders, yes?
Okay. Congratulations. Dr. Salvatore, please come forward. Right. Thank you.[1138.12][1138.12](laughing).
(inaudible).
Great job.[1141.12][1141.12](applause). Great job. Great job. Great job. Yep, you make us proud. Nice work. Good job.
I don't have trainers or cheerleaders, yes?
Okay. Congratulations. And I also like to mention Coach George has been with Long Branch School District since 1999, at which time he won his first state championship. This is his 20th season and during his career, he's received many well-deserved recognitions. Coach George, on behalf of the Long Branch City Council, we thank you for your hard work and dedication to the students of Long Branch. Thank you.[1182.12][1182.12](applause). That's it? Thank you. Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to call up the cheerleaders.[1187.12][1187.12](applause). As I call your name, if you're here, please come forward. Tatiana Corbett, Matis De Silva, Anna Dos Santos, Evelyn Jerome, Kai Gonzalez, Emily Hernandez, Zoe List, Raleigh McMoyle, Rachel Mencelli, Mia Pruitt, Erica Ramirez, Emily Santos, Melanie Santos, Elizabeth Van Buren.[1221.12][1221.12](applause). And I'd like to call the cheerleader coaches to please come forward. Erica Frommich, Christine Mara, Stephanie Matano, and Danell Murray. If you're here, please come forward.[1225.12][1225.12](applause). Thank you so much and congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. That's it. Okay. Now, at this time, will Corporal Kim Levy please come forward and do your presentation at the Long Branch Citizens Police Academy?
I'd like to take this time to thank the participants of the seventh class of the Long Branch Citizens Police Academy program. Corporal Joe Graziano and I would also like to thank Mayor Pallone, the City Council members, Brookdale Community College, Mr. Ed Johnson for the use of the building, Chief Robuck, Reverend Gonzalez, and the guest speakers who spoke at the Long Branch Citizen Police Academy, and also the participants. To date, we have about 275 people that have attended the program. So thank you very much for your time.[1281.12][1281.12](applause). Carol Brannon. Okay, come on up. Sure, come on up.
Come on down.
Okay. Linda Brooks. I don't believe she's here today. Diane Barbara Shafulo. Lucia De Silva. Antonio De Lima. Carla De Souza. Daniel Goncalves. Jaylen Graber. Ironi Lima. Lloyd London. Yep. Teresa Matozi. Edinaldo Pinto. Seema Polansky. Dawn Rabzier. Ethelyn Riddick. Samara Sousa. Andrea Stokes. Tara Wenner. Eileen McDermott. Barbara Louis White. Rayasia Dennis. Okay, the others are not here. Thank you all for taking the time to attend the program. We hope you enjoyed it.[1350.12][1350.12](applause).
(inaudible).
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good job, Kim.[1355.12][1355.12](applause).
Thank you.
Good job.
I don't know if anything changed, but this was a great vibe.
Yeah, absolutely.
Happy holidays, everyone. Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.
Thank you for coming.[1379.12][1379.12](laughing).
Lloyd, Merry Christmas to you. Happy holidays.
CD coming out after January.
Let me know. I'm just here.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the minutes of November 28, 2018.
I'm over.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler.
Yes.
Mr. Viera.
Yes.
Dr. Vogt.
Yes.
Dr. Selly.
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes.
Yes. Consideration of ordinances, public hearing, and final consideration. This is the second reading of ordinance number 27-18 entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Execution of a Lease Agreement in Connection with the Carousel in a Portion of the Pure Village District of the Oceanfront Broadway Redevelopment Area." This ordinance was introduced on November 28, 2018. I need a motion to open the public hearing on this ordinance.
Some... some over.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak about this ordinance only, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once. Carol Brannon. Okay, come on up. Sure, come on up.
Come on down.
Okay. Linda Brooks. I don't believe she's here today. Diane Barbara Shafulo. Lucia Da Silva. Antonio De Lima. Carla De Souza. Daniel Goncalves. Jaylin Graber. Irony Lima. Lloyd London. Teresa Matozi. Edinaldo Pinto. Seema Polansky. Dawn Rabscher. Ethelyn Riddick. Samara Sousa. Andrea Stokes. Tara Wenner. Eileen McDermott. Barbara Louis White. Rayasia Dennis. The others are not here. Thank you all for taking the time to attend the program. We hope you enjoyed it.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, good job, Kim.
Thank you.
Good job.
I don't know if anything changed, but this was a great vibe.
Yeah, absolutely.
Happy holidays, everyone, Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.
Thank you for coming. Lloyd, Merry Christmas to you. Happy holidays. Let me know.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of November 28, 2018.
I'll move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vog?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. Consideration of ordinances, public hearing, and final consideration. This is the second reading of ordinance number 27-18, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing the Execution of a Lease Agreement in Connection with the Carousel in a Portion of the Pier Village District of the Oceanfront Broadway Redevelopment Area." This ordinance was introduced on November 28, 2018. I need a motion to open the public hearing on this ordinance.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak about this ordinance only, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Request one-minute notification. Vincent Lepore, 33, Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. Ordinance 27-18. I'm going to read a paragraph in it. Whereas in the redevelopment agreement, the redeveloper also agreed to construct on the city-owned parcel designated as Block 222.01, Lot 2, a 42-foot diameter carousel on behalf of the city, and the city agreed to finance the construction of the carousel using proceeds of bonds issued under the local bond law and redevelopment area bond financing law. Can anybody on this council this evening tell me where Block 222.01, Lot 2, is?
It's on the boardwalk. It's on, it's on the boardwalk.
Right in front, across the street from the new hotel.
You're all incorrect, it doesn't exist. I checked it myself. I went down to the city tax assessor's office. I requested the city tax assessor do a search on this block. I also requested that the city tax assessor, when he responded, "No, it doesn't exist" on the tax maps, to check with the county tax maps. It's not even with the county tax map. So, council, how do you intend to proceed on a block and lot that doesn't exist? This is a fundamental, basic flaw, a carryover of Aaron Law Firm from the Schneider team that's now happening with Team Pallone. Not only doesn't it exist, you've got a bigger problem. The public records again show Citibank funding the hotel for $35 million and taking all of Block 222.01 as collateral. This city has now screwed up big league. This incompetence, in all its haste, by Team Pallone, yes, Team Pallone, to accommodate any efforts by convicted felon developer Charles Kushner to move ahead. And yes, Kushner has to sign off for Pier Village III urban renewal on this carousel, even though the agreement is with extant for the lease. With Citibank providing that $35 million construction loan in June of 2018, secured in part by Block 222.01, this carousel's in limbo until Citibank signs a PRM, that's a partial release of mortgage, and a new survey and subdivision map is completed and filed with the city and county. Nothing can move forward. Again, nothing can move forward with this ordinance and the carousel until all of the just-mentioned issues are cleared. It's the same old, same old continuance, again, junk government. I'm requesting that this council pull this ordinance this evening for obvious flaws. Should this council proceed to adopt this ordinance, essentially, Team Pallone is saying, with a yes vote, "You are incompetent. I suggest you pull this ordinance and get it done right."
Council President, I don't know if you want to go through, finish the public hearing on this before my comment?
Yes, or anyone else who'd like to approach us? No? Then I need a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Renaud?
The only thing that I could say is that I know that we're in the process of updating the tax map, so it's possible that the subdivision of this property, which created Lot 2, isn't shown on the tax map, and that's, and that's the only thing that I could say that might explain what Mr. Lepore saw on the tax map. So, once again, this is a, as, as council will recall, this is an agreement and an ordinance that was actually originally introduced, or was to be introduced before July 1st. We actually have gone back and renegotiated the terms of it to make them more favorable. My understanding from looking at it, and my only, my only familiarity with the financing, the Citibank or the bank financing that was done, is that there were estoppel certificates that were done by the bank as a result of financing that was done just verifying the fact that the RAB financing was in place, that these, these matters were all taken care of. And as I said, it's just, this is just a function of that the, the city's records haven't caught up with the, caught up with the subdivisions that have already been filed. But I'll, but I'll speak to the tax assessor tomorrow and make, just to give you the updated information.
Do we go forward?
Yes, of course.
Yeah. So, could you just advise us, then, don't we need a corrected version to?
No, because I don't think it's incorrect. The, the answer is, is, so what happens as a practical matter is, the planning board, the planning board does a subdivision. So, a subdivision is created by a map. Then, then the tax records are then updated after that, and the tax maps are physically updated after that. But there is a filed subdivision that created this lot that's already been approved. So, the answer is, you don't have to do anything. The, the ordinance is correct.
But we will have clarity before the, we come to our next council meeting?
Of course. Of course.
Thank you.
But we're voting on it now.
I'm sorry.
We, well, Mr. Dangler just said we will have clarity on it before our.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll give, I'll, I'll, I'll fill out the explanation. The answer is, is that I believe that, that based upon having dealt with this for the past four months, I don't believe that what Mr. Lepore said is correct, and the fact that he went and looked at the tax maps. I know that we are in the process of updating the tax map. So, the tax maps get updated, once again, from subdivision. So, this was created by a subdivision, so it's legally created, so there's not an issue with there not being, not being a.
I think, should we just?
How did I say was not correct, Mr. Renaud? How is it not correct?
In all, in all due respect, this is not the point of the meeting where you get to speak, it's the point where I get to speak. So, if you could either sit down, or, Mr. Lepore, I can finish talking to the council.
In other words, you'll do your propaganda without.
So, so the answer is, is that this was done by a subdivision, so that there's not, I'm not really sure, that there's no reason to hold it. We, we need to get forward, they need to get their permits to do it, so I wouldn't hold it.
I think we should maybe just push it to the next council meeting to vote on that till we get the clarity.
I agree.
I agree too.
Okay, we're gonna put this ordinance on hold till our next council meeting.
So, so we've had the public hearing, we need a motion to table it to the next meeting, then?
I need a motion. I need to mo, a motion to table this ordinance.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vog?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. So, I guess this one and that's our vote, gonna be tabled.
So, you have, you had the ordinance authorized, and which one? No, this is all the same.
Oh, got it, okay.
That's just the approval.
Adopted, got it, I'm sorry, thank you.
Yeah, so no, you've tabled the ordinance. Now, just for the record, the public hearing has already been held on this ordinance, so there will not be another public hearing on this ordinance, you've already held it. So, at the next meeting, all you would do is vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, ordinances for introduction. This is the first reading of ordinance 28-18, entitled "An Ordinance Amending an Ordinance Establishing Titles and Setting Salaries for Certain Employees of the City of Long Branch for the Year 2018." I need a motion to adopt on first reading, advertise and post according to law, and set the public hearing for December 26, 2018.
I'll move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vog?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. The next item are resolutions. We can take the listed resolutions as a consent agenda. Have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vog?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. Next item are applications. I need a motion to approve the listed applications. Have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Second. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you do the introduction of this ordinance?
Okay. Okay, I skipped over it. No.
Is it not in? So, it's, you need a motion to introduce ordinance.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion to introduce ordinance number 2918, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to City Co. Chapter 345 of the City of Long Branch.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vog?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
I'm missing some, I'm missing something. I'd like to open the meeting at this time for public participation. If anybody would like to come forward and address the council?
Requesting one-minute notification. Vincent Lepore, 33, Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. Counsel before you this evening, you have Resolution 27318 for the appointment of a municipal judge. I'm requesting council hold off on this resolution. The background of the prospective judge is very much into social justice, community advocate, state leader for certain rights groups, quality of marriage, forefront of youth education, especially in areas of diversity, and the co-author of anti-bullying law, with expertise in employment law, business litigation, labor, and school issues. That being said, I've been in this city, at this room, since 2003, exposed to most of the departments of this system, of this city, including the courts. The reason I'm asking it to hold off, because over the past two weeks, this city is in a crisis. NJ.com came out with a forced report on forced abuse arrests. City of Long Branch scored number 10 as the worst police department in this state. Now acknowledging, and I will acknowledge, statistics, statistics can be interpreted, but there's an overall trend, and that's the problem. Because the key word throughout my next three minutes is going to be problematic. More so than the data in the forced report, is the underlying problematics of police officers and the number of incidences of forced abuse arrests. In this city now, we need a judge equally fair to the police, as well as equally fair to residents and non-residents. We need that same judge to be equally harsh on problematic cops, as well as residents and non-residents, up to no damn good. Attorney General Gole stated we should use the data to improve officer behavior and hold problematic officers accountable. NJ.com report responded. Problem with the county prosecutor is they investigate criminal activity of cops rather than identifying the troubling trends. When we look at Police Chief Roebuck, and look back over the years, background checks of prospective officers was done by the Street Crimes Unit, run by Chief Roebuck. The problematic officers run by that problematic check, the background check, are the same officers today, some of whom have scored the highest on the first abuse arrest. That's because back then, the Detective Bureau wasn't doing the background checks on these cops, but it was left to the Street Crimes Unit in a political suck-up, kiss-ass culture by LBD. And if you look at those names on that list, and the number of incidents, it's sickening. Also, there were psychiatric evaluations done with somebody's problematic officers. In the case of Ben Rivera versus City of Long Branch, he was disqualified, even though he was employed by the Sheriff's Department. He sued Long Branch because these officers, prospective officers and candidates, were examined by an unqualified psychiatrist. And that culture led to the problematic police officers we have today on this force. So, the problem is a culture in LBD that created this data, and created the problematics that we have today. And it is for that reason, I am asking this council to hold off on the appointment of a judge until we can clear for the public at large the safety of knowing this community can be safe from LBD, and we have a strong judge that can handle.
Thank you, Ms. Lepore.
LBD. Thank you.
Does anyone else who'd like to address the council?
Good evening. Lilian Grauman, 396 Second Avenue, Long Branch. This is in regards to Luanne Peter-Paul, the, hopefully, judge that you're going to approve. I just want to say a few words, I've known Luanne for many years. She is one of the most fairest people that I know, balanced, tough when need be, well-qualified, and all I can say is, she'd make, she'd be a good judge in the City of Long Branch, and hopefully, you will approve this. She has a good record, she was involved in, as, as Mr. Lepore stated, helped write the anti-bullying laws. It's tough, but fair. And I just want to make sure that, that we have someone who, who is able to handle the job, and Ms. Peter-Paul is more than qualified to handle the position. Thank you. And one other thing, there was a video on Facebook last week about the construction on Ocean Avenue, where there was a piece of equipment that was working in a live lane, or as we call it, on Ocean Avenue, and I want to make sure that that does not happen again. I was, I was working at the time and saw the video, and really, haphazard, could, that could have been a, that was an accident waiting to happen. Thankfully, nothing did happen. But I want to make sure that any construction that goes on near a live lane or busy street, that there is police protection that they've put in, they've spoken to the police department, that, because I've seen it not just in West Dundon Ocean Avenue, but I also seen it on Ocean Avenue where the new construction is between North Bath and Laird Street. So, we want to make sure that, that our roads are safe, and that our, our residents are safe, and the people that are working are safe. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Hi, Rice.
I'm going to lighten the mood. Hey, Rice Canetto, um, wanted to say I went to White Travel Projects today, long-awaited place opening up in Long Branch. So I just wanted to remind everybody to go out and support. Uh, also, a bubba couz opened. Um, and then I want to just kind of back up what Lily Ann said. I, I was the one that took the video, and I want to thank John for coming out, um, and addressing that personally. I did make a couple calls to the city before it actually went to him, and, uh, what I saw when I was driving north on that road was pretty terrifying. I mean, beams swinging, it was really scary. Uh, I don't know if this point got through when I was talking to Officer Simonelli and you, John. I had called and spoke to somebody at 8:58 that morning, um, and Kelly may have told you this, I spoke with someone at 8:58 in the morning, and that's the reason that I stayed, because they said they would be there in a few minutes. And that was someone that answered the extension at traffic safety. So, the reason I didn't call dispatch is because I was sitting here thinking that someone was coming. So I would just like to know that, you know, I know that it would be better if I called dispatch and not press 3 for traffic safety, but that day I did, and I spoke to a person that said they would be there in a few minutes, and no one showed up. That's why I ended up speaking with Kelly, and it took an hour or however long to get to you. Um, so if we could have some follow-up there and see who that person was that said they would show up and then didn't, um, I think that we have that responsibility. Uh, touching on what Vinnie and also what Lily Ann said again, um, I'm really excited about Ms. Peter-Paul. I think that, um, it's going to be a wonderful thing for our city to have a judge that can also be more a part of the community. We've never really had that. Judge Sirianni was, you know, in the courtroom, and that was kind of like where he was, at least as far as I know, but, um, Ms. Peter-Paul being like a public figure and more involved in the community, I think will be great, and I think she'll be a great role model. So I'm looking forward to that. A couple months ago when I was here, I asked the council to please consider someone outside of what we've always had in Long Branch, and maybe consider, you know, a person of color or a woman for this position. So I'm really grateful that, you know, we have her, um, coming to Long Branch. And I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Patty Veracek, 246 Jerome Avenue, O'Kearst. Um, and I'm just going to be very brief tonight. Again, I'm concerned with, uh, the video that, um, Rice had caught with the construction that was going on on Ocean Avenue that particular day, and appreciate the fact that we had, um, the mayor that actually showed up in person, and I, um, it just made me wonder, though, if Rice hadn't been there at that particular time, and how many times I've driven down on Ocean Avenue and seen those big giant cranes, and I don't know if maybe it's just me, I have a little fear when I go down, or when I'm driving and I have a, a rotten tree branch above me, or a big, huge crane, um, I have a little feel of needing to duck or go into another lane. Um, so I'm kind of very conscientious about that type of stuff. And it would be nice to know that there are community eyes, you know, people in the community that are watching, and within our departments, uh, to make sure that the proper, uh, permits and, and, um, safety issues are being considered, especially because so much of it is behind fences and stuff that we're not seeing. So it's not just a community safety or neighborhood safety, we're talking about the safety of the, the actual workers on those sites. So that would be up to someone outside of, you know, the community to, to check on that. And in, in that line of thought, um, I know that in Ocean Township, they have one of those anonymous reported apps, again, where, um, you don't have to give a name or anything, you can just report something that you see, and you know that you, your anonymity is held, you know, respectfully quiet if you choose to do that. But it just kind of makes it, again, another, uh, another set of eyes and ears and mouth to protect everyone in, in the community, in the neighborhood. Thank you.
We'll look into it, Ms. Veracek, what you and Rice said. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I don't do this right, let me know. Hi. Anthony Giordano, 4 Kelly Lane, Long Branch. Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight just for one purpose, and that is to endorse Luanne Peter-Paul for, uh, municipal judge. In full disclosure, uh, Luanne's my cousin. So, um, so I've, for 50 years, or a little more, I've been able to see a different side of Luanne than everything that you've known her for. She's a, uh, well-respected public advocate, as, as you know, highly accomplished attorney, always fighting for fairness for everybody, but there's a whole nother side of Luanne that, uh, me and my family, we all get to enjoy, and that's the highly caring, smart, tough, all the attributes you want in somebody who's going to be a municipal court judge. And I promise you, she will do a phenomenal job for the city. She's one of us, she lives here, and it's, it's great that you get to appoint somebody who lives right in town and is part of the community. And, uh, she has my full support. You will be proud that she is our municipal judge, and she'll do a great job. She has big shoes to fill, following Judge Siri, who did a phenomenal job for the city for a long time, but I couldn't think of anybody better or more qualified who will do a, who will be fair to everybody, treat everybody appropriately, treat everybody respectfully, and do a great job as our judge. So, thank you for nominating her, and, uh, hopefully you vote for her. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anthony. Good seeing you.
Yeah.
80 years.
Is there anyone else? I need a motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Your, your, the motion to take the resolutions as a consent.
Okay, I need a motion to take the resolutions as a consent of order. As a consent agenda, I'm sorry. Um, we can take all the listed resolutions. Kind of a motion, please?
Some move.
Second.
Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Thank, yes, thank you. Um, applications, I need a motion to approve the listed application, approval of the renewal of taxi medallions for 2019.
Some move.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to ask each councilperson if they have something they'd like to say for the good of the order. Um, Dr. Vogt?
Oh, we'll start at this end. So you know I always like to talk about Long Branch pride, we, what a, what a night, right? It's so wonderful to walk in here and have the whole room filled, and, uh, just to be able to celebrate the football team and, and our superintendent, just wonderful, you can't stop that. So, that's, that's the moment for Long Branch pride. Um, let me tell you another thing you'll be hearing more about, uh, and this goes back a ways, this goes back to when we were, we first introduced the Hundred Day Plan, and we had 25 different initiatives on that plan. And, um, behind the scenes, this whole council, you know, the whole panel of everyone up here has been working quite diligently on any one of those 25. The one I'm going to tell you about is the progress that we've made, um, addressing the opioid epidemic, which you probably all are very well aware of. Um, that is a tremendous issue for us, for us in Long Branch, as well as a tremendous issue, um, for the, for the, for the country. Um, Mayor Plone has taken the lead in putting together a, uh, test, task force. Um, we had one, uh, we have a small steering committee that has met regularly, about five or six times at least, uh, already, um, to bring together professionals in Long, in, in Long Branch who work, um, with this, uh, with this, with this challenge. Um, our next step is we're going to be meeting with, uh, some community residents, um, in terms of getting input on what's the best way this task force can make a difference in, in Long Branch in dealing with this. So I'll put that out, just to let you know that, um, there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes, and as that progresses, we'll, um, not only keep you informed, but keep you involved and ask for your participation as we move along.
Thank you. Councilman Viera?
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Tonight was a special night because I had goosebumps on me because the vibe in this room with, uh, Dr. Salvatore and Police Academy, and let's not forget the high school football team, i- it was wonderful. I, that's, this is what I do these things for, it's, it was amazing, and that's, when I take this seat, that's where it's worth it. You know what I mean? We have some negativity, but the vibe, it was just positive. And I'd like to welcome Luanne, our new judge, and I know she'll do well, and good night.
Councilman Dangler?
Yes. Um, first, uh, I want to say I'm certainly proud of, of being a former board member, proud of what the, uh, football team has done, what they've done for the, uh, the town of Long Branch for the last couple of years, and I certainly agree with the sentiments of, uh, Dr. Salvatore, how he brings us together, and we need to, to come together even when we disagree. Uh, so the, some of the comments this evening, um, I didn't take it as negative comment, but I would, hopefully, those who stayed and listened see that we do listen and we do pay attention, and if we have some concerns, we're not afraid to, uh, to rethink it and get a little bit, bit more, um, a little more information before we move forward. So again, I do thank you for coming out, and, uh, all have a blessed holiday season.
Councilwoman Mary Jane Selly?
Tonight was a very special night. We had a lot of people who were honored and certainly most deserving. First of all, Dr. Salvatore, Superintendent of the Year, we're all very proud of him. Second of all, and I've attended, believe it or not, a couple of the football games, and I'm very proud of the team and what they've done, and that shows what Danny George has done for the whole group of fine young people. The second thing, and the third thing I'd like to say is, the Citizens Police Academy, for any of you who have not gone, it's quite a thrilling expense, expense, experience. And they do a marvelous job. This last time, I sat in on the fire demonstration, and how thrilling was that? First of all, and Luanne, I'm very proud of you. You will do an excellent job. I know, I've known you for a long time, and I couldn't be prouder, and I know you'll do Long Branch proud, and lots of luck and congratulations. And finally, to all the citizens of Long Branch, I wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, Happy Kwanzaa, and all the rest of the things that are there, but anyway, have a nice holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Plone?
I'd like to thank everybody again for being here this evening. I also would like to say Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to everyone and whatever holiday that you're, um, celebrating this season. Uh, also like to congratulate our, our state championship bas- uh, fo- basketball, football team, hopefully basketball team. Uh, Dr. Salvatore, of course, for being honored, and to the Citizens Police Academy, thank you for putting the time in and, and for all that, uh, you do. So we have a few events coming up, I just wanted to, uh, mention, you, we have an annual holiday party, the Long Branch Recreation Department, in conjunction with the Long Branch Housing Authority, will be hosting its annual holiday party on Wednesday, December 19th. That's next Wednesday from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. It'll be located at the Adam Bucky James Community Center, which is at 231 Wilbur Avenue, Wilbur Ray Avenue. Uh, it's open to all Long Branch children, ages newborn to 10 years old, adults should and must accompany the children, and there will be fun festive event with Santa Claus will all be attending, and Santa Claus will be there to hand out a gift to every child. There's no fee for this event, and treats will also be given out to every child while festive music plays, uh, throughout the whole party. Seasonal, uh, beach passes are 2019 seasonal Long Branch beach badges are on sale from November 1st through January 31st at the Recreation Department, also again, 231 Wilbur Ray Avenue, uh, and the tax office here at City Hall. The price are $40 for adult ages 18 to 61, and $25 for students 14 to 17. Uh, it's cash only, and, um, uh, I just want to note that that's a $5 discount at both age groups, and also it comes in a nice little gift box, so it's a very nice, uh, holiday present, um, if you know somebody likes to go to the beach. Uh, I'd also want to congratulate our new judge, Judge Luanne Peter-Paul, and if I may, I would like to tell you a little bit about Luanne. So, Luanne has been one of the state's leaders for LGBT rights and equality, and for 12 years, she served on the Board of Garden State Equality as Chair for the Garden State Equality Action Fund. Her work on the Board of Garden State Equality has been largely credited as a driving force behind marriage equality here in the state of New Jersey, uh, as well as the United States. Luanne was the recipient of the Lifetime Achievement Award, um, by a section of the New Jersey State Bar Association. Locally, she's been at the forefront in supporting education for youth, especially in areas of diversity, and one of her most distinguished accomplishments is co-authoring the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, which was passed by both the State Assembly and the Senate, and was signed into law by Governor Christie in January of 2011. This bill is recognized as one of the strongest anti-bullying laws in the country, so, Luanne, thank you for all that you, you do, and we're, we're very proud to have you for that. Luanne is also currently a partner and principal at Peter-Paul Law in Asbury Park. Her practice involves the handling of complex litigation, employment law, business litigation, labor law, and school law issues. She's admitted to practice before the state and federal courts in New Jersey and the Court of Appeals for the Third Circuit. She's a frequent speaker on employment discrimination issues, anti-bullying in schools and the workplace. She's presented on programs sponsored by the American Bar Association, New Jersey Judicial College, Legal One, American Council on Diversity, Rutgers University, King University, and numerous clients. And again, congratulations Judge Peter-Paul, we're happy to have you here. And lastly, I just want to say that city offices will be closed on December 24th and December 25th. There will be garbage and paper pickup on December 24th for the South Zone. There will be no garbage or paper pickup on December 25th for the North Zone. So again, thank you very much, and, uh, it's great seeing you all.
And I too would like to congratulate Judge Peter-Paul. I wish you much success, and if there's anything you need, we're here for you, you have our full support. And I would like to thank everyone for coming out this evening and wish you all a happy holiday and a happy and healthy New Year. And we'll see you in, well, actually, see you before the, uh, New Year, so have a great holiday. Thank you. I need a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Second. Roll call.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Do you oppose?
No. Thanks.
Tim, make us. I like that.